Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Okon.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Zubor here, and Chairman Green.
Here.
And let the minutes reflect that Commissioner Dotson is not here.
Okay, and of course, we have our community planner, Jeff Goulet, and welcome to you all here tonight, and I'm sure you have some interest in one or two of the projects that we have before us. Before we get into that, we're going to talk about the minutes. We last met August 7th. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes from the August 7th meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins to accept those minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and we have an agenda, agenda tonight of basically three items. Do I hear any late additions to that agenda from staff?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, seeing none, do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Okon and support by Commissioner Zubor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Our first two items are actually public hearings. Now, you're invited to speak on any of those issues. For those who have not been here before, we ask that you come to the podium and at some point in time, fill out one of our forms and leave it in the, I guess there's a box on the podium, so that we have record of your visit and the comments that you made, and speaking to the mic because this is being recorded for the folks at home to watch on cable. So with that in mind, our first public hearing of the night is the Wayland Greenleaf Trust conditional rezoning. We're considering a conditional zoning amendment for property which is located north of Copernick Road and east of Hagerty. Jeff, could you give more detail?
Yes, as you mentioned, this is a request for a conditional rezoning, amending the zoning from light industrial to R6 single-family attached residential district, subject to an attached statement of conditions and conceptual plan. It's a little bit different than a lot of rezonings, because a lot of rezoning just is a base rezoning, and it's, they're not attached, there's no conditions attached, and then they can do whatever the zoning allows them to. What the applicant has done is he's filed a voluntary statement of conditions, which goes along with the zoning, that places restrictions on the zoning, so that you know what's going to, you know, occur with the rezoning. So this one actually has a specific plan for attached residential, up to 90 units. Under R6, R6 allows up to eight units per acre. He's eliminating the project to about 5.6 units per acre, and there's, he's also limiting the, the size of the buildings, allowing for maintenance of an existing natural buffer behind Holiday Park subdivision, with additional trees planted to fill in the gaps between the existing tree cover. He's also proposing to include a multipurpose path that's constructed through the project with connection to the I-275 Black Trail along the north side of Copernick Road. So as part of this, he did a traffic evaluation and compared that to the existing zoning and what would occur with the existing zoning. The traffic evaluation indicated that the project would not have a significant impact on the nearby intersections and driveways, based on, based, based on the amount, based on the amount of traffic generated from the amount of industrial development that it could occur on this site, based on the number of employees and things that would normally come and go from an industrial site. The, and the utility, we looked at the sanitary sewer analysis, the assumptions were based on the entire maximum density of 128 units. There's not a negligible impact on the ability to serve it with sanitary sewer. So Mr. Varys here tonight to explain the project to you, I'll let him explain to what the project is a little bit more detail, will bring up a map on the, you know, showing the conceptual plan. You know, one of the things that we looked at from a planning staff is the surrounding property uses. Normally, we don't have industrial budding up to single-family, so to allow a transition between the freeway and the, and the railroad to single-family, this would be a good transitional use. We also have no industrial use east of the railroad track, so everything east of the railroad track is generally residential. All of our industrials west, is, you know, west of the railroad track. So, you know, this has been zoned, you know, light industrial for many, many years. Obviously, there's not a market at this point in time for industrial at this location, but that doesn't mean there won't be, and that doesn't mean that this property will not be developed for industrial in the near future, given the current market conditions. So I would ask the applicant to come up, and he can more fully explain their proposal tonight.
Come on up. And while he's doing that, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, sir. Anything to add to what Mr. Goulet has said?
Yeah, I would like to. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me tonight. I had received some letters of concern from some of the neighbors. Couple months ago, I had sent out information to, I want to say it was around 30 of the residents that lived adjacent to the property, to kind of show them what we have as far as the layout, the elevation of the product, what our plans were, and that we were going to have to brush hog to get some, brush hog the property, I'm sorry, to be able to do our engineering evaluations with our topo and our, and our Phase 2 and all those things that we needed to do. I included my cellphone number on there for anybody to call me at any time. I did hear from two of the, two of the residents. We talked about 20 minutes each one. So I, you know, heard what they said, read the, I would say there's probably about 50 comments, and so I just want to bullet point each of those of what their concerns were. I'm going to go over the three minutes, is that okay? Or the five minutes?
I think it's important.
You're not limited to three minutes, Danny, is the applicant.
Oh, okay. So I want to, I want to hit their bullet points, and hopefully I can put their minds at ease. As I said in the letter, we've been building in the community since 1995. Jeff's known, the Planning Commission, most of you know me, most of you, or some of you don't. We've got a great reputation in the city. We built probably two-thirds of Cherry Hill Village, along with other neighborhoods throughout the community. So the five things that really kept coming up in, in all these conversations and all of these letters were these things. The concern for low rents, the trees, the traffic, the property values, and the noise. So I'm going to hit each one of those. I don't think anybody in here, and I could be wrong, is in the apartment industry, so they probably aren't really familiar with how it really works. So there's different classes of property, there's A, B, and C. A is predominantly what is in the township, that would be Sings Parcels or the Uptown, those more newer communities that have the nicer amenities, or the garages and things like that. Then you've got your B properties and your C properties. Canton Crossings is adjacent to their properties, you all know, and that is actually a low B rated property. So we did, obviously, before, we're going to look at investing millions and millions of dollars, we want to make sure that the market will bear what we want to do. So we took the most recent properties, Uptown, but not the one that just got built, but the phase that was built in '05, Summit Creek, which was built in '99, Village Green, which was built in 1990, and Cinnamon, Cinnamon Point, which was built in '03. And we looked at what their occupancy rates were, what their rental rates were, and then we also looked at Canton Crossing as well. So Uptown and Village Green were at $1.30 a square foot as an average. So if it's a thousand square foot unit, it was renting for $1,300. Summit Creek was $1.27 average, and Cinnamon Point was $1.17. Now Summit Creek has garages, Uptown doesn't, or I don't, at least I don't believe they do, or if they do, not all of them do. Village Green doesn't have them, and Cinnamon Point doesn't have them, they have them as an option. Canton Crossing, and I gave you those years, was built, I think, in the 60s, or maybe early 70s, I don't, I'm not exactly sure on when that was built, but that's averaging $1.12 a square foot. Okay? The occupancies for the ones that I told you, Uptown is at 90, Summit Creek's 97, Village Green's at 100, and Cinnamon Point's at 94. As an apartment owner, if I'm at 95% occupancy, I'm full occupancy, because you're going to always have people turning. So anywhere above 90 is, is good. It's, I wouldn't say considered full if you're at 90, but it's pretty close to it. So what we do with ours, and I would invite any of you, if you want to call me, I'll take you through what we do. We don't build apartments, we build communities. Our units have basements, our units have granite, our units have tile, our units have wood flooring, our units are as nice as any house we've built. We put the same products in, and because of that, we don't have turnover. Our, we have communities that are almost five years old, and we have people that have been there from day one. They don't leave. It's a totally different class of renter than what, and I understand what you guys are thinking we're going to put in there. Okay? In the past, so if we're at $1.15, okay, with garages, with basements, we're three cents a, a square foot more than Canton Crossing, but mind you, we're bigger than them, so we're going to be more. Our rents are going to range between 15 and 1/4 and $1,700, and I guarantee you, we'll get those. I know some of you people don't think we will, but I'm telling you, we will. When they can compare what we do, and we're 10% less than...
I think that window is going to shake, dude.
I'll get to that. I'll get to that. Okay, so that, I want to, I want to take that. I also want you to understand too, what's changed in our community, I mean, in the, in the rental market, is we have a lot of baby boomers that are selling their houses, taking that nest egg, putting it in the bank, and then renting ranch-type units, because they're going to have the medical expenses, they're going to have the things that are going to come up, that if all their money is tied up in their house, they don't have any cash to take care of their stuff. So that's what we're seeing as a big, that's why, like Rosewood, or is it Redwood or Rosewood? The ones on Hagerty.
Redwood.
Redwood. That's why their success has been off the charts. We're doing a rental, a ranch community in Celine. We haven't even framed our first building, we're already 25% full. So we see that demographic. The other change is the families. There's a lot more families going into apartments, by choice or not, than there are actually buying homes. Especially when you've got such a great community like this, it's hard to be able to afford a home in Canton, especially a brand-new one, but you can live in a brand-new product of ours, with a basement, with a garage, for $1,600. You know, it's, it's not an easy thing for somebody to be able to do in this community. So that's why we have a little bit different product than what is typical of an apartment. And I, Jeff, do you have the picture of the, of the product?
That was not on the CD you gave me.
Our buildings look like condos. They don't look like apartments. They're not double-stacked, it's a single unit, a single unit, a single unit. It's not, it's...
Is it just one way out, sir?
What's that?
Is it just one way out?
Yeah, that's, well, we have the emergency entrance as well, but yeah, there's just one way in, one normal traffic way in for the development.
Okay, wait, let him, let him, please let him go through what he needs to go through, and then we'll have room for questions afterward.
Okay, so that's, that's my part of the rents, the low rents. My second thing was on the trees. In some of the comments, I, I read that people had made comments that the nature preserve, or I was told this was going to be this, or this was going to be that. I've been doing this for 30 years, and every time I hear that, I cringe, because I'm pretty safe in assuming that it's a realtor telling them that will never be developed. Anybody that's ever bought a house from me, that the woods is adjacent to that lot, and I don't own that property, that I can for sure tell them what's going to happen, I say it looks like that today, it could change tomorrow. It all depends on who builds and buys the piece next door. And unfortunately, at some point, if it's not from us, somebody will do something on that property. Now, on the industrial side of it, if you look at all the industrial that's on the other side of the freeway, on the south and north side, there's not a tree standing unless the developer planted it. With the residential development, as we proposed, the 15 feet closest to all the residences, we are not touching, we're not cutting, we're not doing anything in there. Then, the next 10 feet, we've dedicated to plant all of our replacement trees in there to help fill in all those gaps, which we will have a lot of them. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of trees there, we're going to have to take the stuff in the middle down and leave the perimeters as best we can, leave the perimeter trees, I'm sorry, on that, that side, and everything that we can, and won't get impacted by the grade changes, if there are grade changes. And that's all I can tell you with that. I mean, what we're doing is preserving more than any industrial use ever would. The third thing on traffic. I don't know how much you heard Jeff say, but Jeff said, "The impact that we will have is less," and I have my traffic engine here, here, "is less than what an industrial use would be." Obviously, it's going to be more than nothing, but it's going to be less than if someone, and correct me if I'm wrong, 150,000 square foot facility could go in that space, correct? Okay.
Probably, probably 200,000.
That could be how tall?
40 to 50 feet tall.
That could run 24 hours a day, if it was a shipping center?
Have no way to regulate their hours of operation, they could run three ships.
Okay, so if you want to put that into perspective, the people who said, "My property value will go down because we're having a residential development built next to us," how would that look? How would that look trying to sell your house when they walk up to your back door and they look and they see a 20-foot-tall sheet metal wall? Like, that's going to take your values down, not building a residential community next to you. That's a complete misconception on, on that. Back on the traffic, before we did anything, anything with this property, Julie was the first person we called. That's the traffic engineer. Why? Because the first thing we wanted to make sure of was that we weren't negatively impacting you guys with that traffic. If it brought more, this would have never came, this would have never came to the commission. I said, "We're done, we'll go on to another piece." Okay? But you have your alternative. You could have 18-wheelers, you can have all that, all that traffic from light industrial property, or you could have residential traffic. Now, again, in those letters, there was comments made about the cut-through traffic through Holiday Park to get to Joy Road. Okay? So my question to you, and maybe I'm off-base on this, if you have a direct route going down Copernick, up Copernick into Hicks, and take all main roads with only, I believe, one stop sign, or maybe two, versus driving through a meandering subdivision and hitting, I'm going to guess, a half a dozen? I know myself, I would never go through that subdivision, because it'd take me through, I'm just telling you me, I'm not saying that's what people do, I'm just telling you, I would never do that, because it's a longer route than taking the Copernick.
Excuse me.
Excuse.
We're, please, please, please refrain from the comments from the audience. You're not helping your case, honestly, so...
Okay, so property values, I already talked about that. I also just want to add one more thing to that one. There's a development that we have right now in Pittsfield Township that was a condo development in '05 that stalled, went completely dead. It was about 46% completed. We took it over in 2012, built all the same units, kept them all, kept them all for rentals, and I have had numerous people that live there, that had bought the condos and the other part of the project, that asked us to take over their association, because of the way that we take care of our stuff compared to the way the association does. And every one of those homeowners, or condo owners, I should say, have all sold their properties for more than what they were selling for in the peak prices of 2005. So we don't ruin neighborhoods, we help them. You know, our product is really nice, and we take immaculate care of it. The last thing is the noise. So the other day, myself and my partners and our leasing agency went to the development, and we were standing on Copernick Road at 3:30 in the afternoon, and we were having a normal conversation, our normal voices. The freeway, you can hear it in the background, but it is elevated, and as you continue to go north, it elevates even higher. I would compare it, and I didn't do any testing on it, but I would compare that noise to the same road noise from Ford Road, at the equivalent levels, that you could stand in a parking lot on Ford Road and have a conversation with somebody, and you're not shouting, you can talk, and they can hear you. We then got to hear the train, and the loud, the horn, for sure, it's loud, like it's a train horn, right? And once the train got through the intersection but was still traveling, we resumed our conversation at normal voices. The tracks aren't loud, it's the horn that's really loud. And does it rumble the ground? I'm sure it does. I'm sure it does. But on the noise side of it, the, the homes in Holiday Park, I'm, again, I'm going to guess that they were probably built in the 60s and 70s? I'm sure their insulation is no more than R5, if that's even what's in there. I'm sure their glass is not built to withstand, well, I guarantee it, unless they got them replaced, the sound, there's, there's glass that can be put in windows now that bounce the sound off. There's foam insulation that completely dents the sound, as a matter of fact, one of my partners who's here, lived in Plymouth, three blocks away from the train, and he insulated it with this foam, and he said, "I couldn't even hear it." So there's precautions that we can take. We're also going to flip the entrance to pull it further away, bring the pond over to here, and take that one building off of the main, where the train, the intersection is. So we're going to pull that away, we're going to basically flip-flop those two entrances. So really, we only have the two buildings that are directly on the train, and then the other ones that are away, but we're going to do that same, the foam and the glass on all of them anyways. And lastly, the, the, the buildings will create even more of a buffer on that noise deflection than the trees did, for sure. There's no doubt in my mind that that will. So those are my points on, on here, and we, you know, we've also, one more thing, we've built along I-275 here in Canton, on both sides. We've built on a train track, I think we had 20 lots, no, 15 lots on a train track in Celine, and every one of those homes sold. And they didn't take forever, it is what it is. They pay a little bit less maybe for a lot premium, but other than that, and they're committed by owning the home versus leasing something. If they come here for a year and they can't stand the train noise, they're not tied down, they can leave, unlike buying it, and we've sold many homes along freeways and railroad tracks. So I, you know, if I was trying to get $1.50 a square foot, I'd say, yeah, I, I'd be concerned, but at where we're going to be in our rents, we won't have any issues.
Okay, will you stay close by?
Absolutely.
So that you can answer any specific questions, and I would ask anyone that might be coming to the, to the podium, to, you, you heard a lot of information about the project, different, different aspects. If it's something that, that might be repeated, I'd ask you not to, to ask that specific question. If you have something different, then let's have at it, so that we can all be more educated as to what's going on and what the, the issues are. So with that, I'm going to start, well, let's just start at the front and ask if there's anyone that would like to, to get up and say anything, ask anything. Again, you do need to come to the podium. Yep? Mm-hmm. Now's your chance.
I just have a couple questions.
Who are you?
I'm sorry, Catherine Stafford. I live on Copernick.
Your address?
Close to where the, 39725 Copernick. That dirt road is what worries me. The maintenance of it is difficult, we have a lot of very fast traffic down that street, and I'm worried that that's going to get worse, or that road isn't going, is going to change, or will, won't be a dirt road anymore. I'm worried about the traffic on that, from that side of it. And I also wondered if there are sidewalks that are going to go in front.
Yes.
So we'll have sidewalks all the way through to the...
All the way across our property, obviously.
They are required to do that.
I mean, that's a good answer. I think those are the only questions I have for now.
Okay, thank you. And next, going farther back.
Why don't you go row by row?
Did you want to address that?
I do, I want to ask a question on that. At what point does Copernick become Westland's road? Or is it entirely in the Canton border? I don't know exactly where that border hits.
Center line of the road. Center line of the road.
Oh, it's not a, it's not a city road with Westland?
Center line of the road, between county and ci, and city.
Okay, gotcha.
It's, it's, it's a mi, it's a mile road, so it's a county responsibility, irregardless of whether it's in Westland or in Canton, it's a county road, so...
I saw a hand raised back there. Yes, sir, come on up.
I think I can read my comments in three minutes.
Okay.
My name is Ed Cope. I rise in opposition to the proposed...
Your address, sir?
7941 Kaiser. I rise in opposition to the proposed rezoning of the parcel of land located north of Copernick Road and east of Hagerty. I've lived in the Holiday Park subdivision for 27 years. The parcel of land that is proposed to be rezoned is my backyard. I've taken some comfort over the years in the knowledge that this small parcel of land, zoned light industrial, was basically useless for that purpose, and have seen this for-sale sign on this land all the years that I've lived here. Felt, felt pretty secure that the woods behind my home would probably remain a nice sanctuary for deer and other animals that live there, and I'm astonished that the Canton Planning Commission would even consider allowing family dwellings to be built in this small parcel that is bordered by I-275 freeway and the train track that will run right through the backyards of the units proposed for this land. The company that has proposed to build here have already removed large swaths of trees and vegetations from the parcel. Now, sitting in my, on my deck in the backyard of my home, I no longer hear the train as it goes by, I feel the train as it passes. I no longer hear the freeway in the background, I feel the rumble of the cars. I can only imagine the level of discomfort that would be felt by the inhabitants of this ill-conceived project. I ask that the Planning Commission consider the following before allowing this project to be sanctioned. First, the Commission should consider the property value of Holiday Park homes that will be negatively impacted. We've been struggling for the last number of years to see our property values return to their former numbers, and we are hampered by a number of detractors. First, as noted, the close proximity to the train tracks and the freeway. Our narrow roads allow parking only on one side of the street, and many looking to buy find that to be a negative. Getting into and out of the subdivision is sometimes very difficult, with most of us using Holly at the south end to Copernick, or Joy to the north. The train that likes to sit on Copernick for hours on end will cause traffic in the subdivision real problems that must flow through the sub, either north to Joy, or take Copernick's dirt road out Hicks. Then there's the issue of the close proximity to the crossings apartment complex. Many homebuyers find this a negative as they see the crime statistics and the impact this large complex has on the improperly managed-for-years as our, and has in our neighborhood. I see the new proposed complex as the crossings, too, as it will most certainly become Section 8 housing within the first couple of years. I can't think of any person who has their own money that would move into an apartment, no matter how nicely built, and the crossings were actually quite nice apartments when they were built, with a train track and a freeway in their backyard. The only entity I know of that is stupid enough to do that is the federal government, who will gladly give Section 8 monies to individuals who don't care where they live as long as it is nearly free. The Holiday Park sub will suffer considerable monetary loss as our property values decline, and I wonder if our taxes will go down. The proposal for this land, as I see, is a last-ditch money-grab scheme by a landowner who I'm sure would like to get revenue for his, for his land, and a developer has, who has no care for the, in the world for the quality of life of those who move into and out of the buildings, and certainly have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I ask that the Planning Commission take into consideration what the true nature of this project is. For the last 27 years that I've lived here, no one considered this land even though it was in a good location. Most persons who looked at this parcel saw what I saw, too small and locked in by the freeway and tracks. Just because you can cram apartments in this wedge of land doesn't mean that you should, and you don't have to be a genius to see that living in such close proximity to train and freeways is not good. The noise level that will increase by mowing down all the trees and vegetation in that parcel will be felt much farther than Kaiser Street, it will permeate the entire subdivision. I ask not just for myself, but for my fellow residents, that you not allow this horrible idea to go forward, and this parcel remain rezoned for light industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just for the record, that letter had, was submitted to us, we had, we had already read that letter, so thank you for reading it now. I do want to ask you one quick question, and this is not to be antagonistic or anything.
Oh, absolutely.
Because there is a zoning that is there, it's light industrial, correct? So obviously, if it stayed undeveloped, everybody here would be happy, but if you were to balance light industrial facility, which we talked about earlier, Jeff talked about earlier, and residential, just, I just want to get a feel, would you...
Well, my, my feeling is, is... My feeling is, especially in my line of work, my feeling is that this property, because of where it is and how it says, as a residential property, would quickly be inhabited by the criminal element. Okay, I'm sorry. I've done a lot of work in the crossings. I worked Canton Township Police Reserve for 14 years. I spent a great deal of time in the crossings. They are beautiful units. When they were built, very, very nice.
Yeah, obviously, we can't decide on a project like this on the basis of those kinds of predictions.
Well, I'm just telling you what I believe is going to happen here because I'm looking at who's going to...
But, to my question, to my question, industrial versus residential?
Industrial will not have the crime management, okay? I might not like industrial back there. I would, I mean, obviously, I think we'd all like to see it stay what it is, but I also, I've lived there all these years knowing that light industrial is what it was zoned. But, like I said, I walked through that thing a number of times. I'm like, there's a reason why people haven't gone onto that side, and I think it has to do with being locked in. There's not enough room. You can build a huge complex in there, but you cannot, you cannot access the railroad for your industrial use because of the, you don't have room to do that. The other side was all vacant lot when I moved there. It has all been built up now, industrial, light industrial, and they have access because of, they're not, is locked in by the railroad. They have all that long, long path in there.
Okay.
Now, it's, it's just that one little sliver there.
Yeah.
You can cram those apartments in there, but I think you're going to have Section 8 real quick.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, you had your hand up.
My name's Jane Murphy, 7719 Kaiser, and I have a question for the builder, developer. My house abuts the property, and it's directly behind the first house on Copernick, east of the railroad track. So, on the north...
Can you point on there, your lot lines?
Can I point right on this one? So, it's going to be, this is the first house on Copernick. This is my property. The first house on Copernick, the elevation is significantly higher than my yard, and the water erosion of the soil has caused me to have to invest significance amount of money in the past two years, close to $50,000, raising the foundation of the home, re-waterproofing the basement. Will your development, and this question would go to light industrial as well, will the elevation stay as it is now, or are you going to raise the property up to the level of Copernick?
Please come to the mic, Danny. Yeah, thank you.
I'll get out of there.
So, we got her letter. Obviously, that was one of the ones that we read, and Evan is our engineer, and we talked about, that was one of the reasons why we talked about relocating the pond, to take that away from your, your house. Until we do the topo study, which we haven't done yet, I can't tell you exactly where we'll be on elevation-wise, but all of our stormwater, we have, we will have storm drains along the property that will take that water...
Everybody awake?
...so it doesn't go into anybody else's yards. I mean, that's throughout the township. That is an ordinance that they have. Building one individual house, I can't tell you what they did, but as a development, that is what we are required to do.
And I would like to see the engineering study that was done when the homes in Holiday Park and Copernick were developed.
Probably not. Probably not. The stormwater regulations back in the 60s were nonexistent. Under the stormwater regulations since the 90s, they have to take care of all of their stormwater on their own property. They have to collect it. They have to treat it. They have to get rid of it. They can't adversely impact any adjacent property with their stormwater, so they have to manage it all on-site. Okay. So, in, you know, in the 60s, nobody heard of stormwater management in the 60s. So, that's part of the problem that you were having with your house is there weren't any, you know, detailed engineering stormwater plans that were done with Holiday Park or the, or the houses at front on Copernick, so.
That's encouraging. You know, as a homeowner, I'll never get that money back out of my property, so to have it exacerbated would be a concern for me.
That won't happen.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, come on up. It is what it is.
Hi, my name is Courtney Cope. I live at 7941 Kaiser Street. I just have a quick question for the developer. A lot of trees have been mowed down already.
Underbrush, yeah.
It's, it's, there's quite a clearing in there, and my question is, since it has not been rezoned yet, and you not, you're not sure if you're going to get the rezon or not, why did you spend all that money to do that if you didn't know if, you know what I mean? Like, that would be quite a waste of money if it doesn't get rezoned yet. You seem pretty sure that this is going to happen, so I'm just curious as to why.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that's a great question. When developers buy property, we have time limits, and there is nothing in the ordinance that doesn't allow a landowner to mow their property. We didn't cut, like, we didn't have the scissors that cuts the big trees. We mowed it because we have to do our topo. We have to do all of our studies prior to our due diligence time to expire. If we don't get a preemptive going on that, then we would never meet our timelines. Horticulturists do that all the time. They'll thin out a forest so that it can get healthier. In essence, if we were not to proceed, that's what would happen there. It will fill back in. It'll take a couple of years to fill all that undergrowth back in, but that's eventually what it will do. So, we gambled. I mean, we honestly, if you guys deny us, then we're out of that money, and we just move on.
All right, fair enough. Yes, ma'am, come on.
Hello, I'm Madeline Reext, 39816 Lynn Street. We just moved into this division this summer, and I, I have a statement as a parent about the proposed development, as well as a question. Proposed development-wise, the train tracks go right here. As a mother of a two-year-old and a six-month-old, I would not look at that area. I would be very off-put unless the price put it in my budget that that met my budgetary need, and that was the only place I could live. I love the talk. I like that it's not going to be stacked. I like that you're putting in a pond. I like that it's going to have basements, and it's built to attract a better class of renter, a more response, in theory, a more responsible and respectful class of renter. I appreciate that. My biggest concern, which has been voiced already, is that this division, although well-planned and well-drawn, because of its proximity to the railroad and the highway, it will inevitably sit empty, or it'll have such a high turnover that it will begin to sit empty and become a crossings, too. That's my biggest concern as a parent slash would-have-been-a-prospective-buyer earlier this year, looking. A question I have for the developer. The scuttlebutt on our Facebook site as a division was that ordinance actually stopped your plowing of the woods. Is that correct?
No, they came out, but they didn't stop us.
Okay.
I talked to Lee.
We responded to a complaint from the neighborhood about what they, you know, thought was illegal clearing. The tree present, the tree ordinance in the township only regulates larger material, six inches and greater. Generally, we like to let people know when they're going to do stuff like that, so we can respond to neighborhood issues. If somebody's going to go out there and do some brushing, in this particular case, we didn't know that Mr. Very's company was going to go out and do some brushing. So, we met out there to find out what was going on. We just told him to say, just do as little as possible to get in, and what you need to do for your surveys, and, you know, do as little harm as possible in there, due to the sensitive, you know, nature of, of the neighborhood. So, there was no violation issued to Mr. Very. We just went out and investigated what he was doing, so.
The other thing I want to address with what she said, we plan on putting, oh, the picture, okay, all along the train 275, all that, the northern property across the crossings, and then the first 300 feet coming back this way, we plan on putting an eight-foot privacy, eight-foot vinyl privacy fence, not a wood one that's going to look awful in a handful of years. You know, it's, it's a $100,000 investment on our side to do that, and we want to do that for that exact reason, that we want to be able to visually, not hearing-wise, but visually separate the train on the other side of that fence of what we're going to do, and also prevent people from just walking in off the trail into our neighborhood, obviously. So, that was our, that's our intention. That's what we plan on doing.
Okay.
And another concern that was also voiced is that Copernick is not paved past Holly. I have a friend that lives on Hicks. That would be great if it was paved, because it's only three minutes. I took that road one day with my six-month-old who hates the car. He was two at the time, two months old, and I instantly regretted my decision. If you have a pickup truck, that road, I would consider it a decent cut-through to get to Hicks. With my minivan going maybe 10 miles per hour, I was holding the rail, the steering wheel going, "Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, honey. I'm so sorry." He's going, "Ah!" I, if it were a paved road, I'd be much less concerned about the perceived added traffic to our neighborhood, but since it is unpaved, I do not see it as a valid argument that it will help alleviate that traffic flow. I had something else, but it has since escaped my mind. Oh, yes, my neighbors. In order for us to be taken seriously, we need to be respectful of when he's speaking and when the board is speaking. I know that this is very near and dear to many people's hearts who have lived here for 20-plus years, but in order for us to be taken seriously, we need to show the respect that we in turn expect when we are up here speaking ourselves. So, just to anyone else who's coming up here, I needed to say that.
Thank you so much for that. Yeah, appreciate it. Danny, did you have something, wanted to comment on that?
You know, in finding that that is a county road, I assume that it was partially Westland, and then obviously, in the township, I know the county, you as residents can call the road commission to maintenance to get that graded. I know they probably ignore you, but the more you call, the more they are going to come out. I'm just telling you.
Please.
They do. They grade it every 30 days?
Okay, we need to, we need to carry the conversation up here, so if... Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, my name is Dorothea Broom. I live at 39888 John Drive. I am the neighbor of Jane, so I'm like two houses away from the development. We've lived in our home for 41 years. We're one of the originals, along with Losy Tonda. She was my neighbor. My concern is endangerment of us who live there right now and the prospective people coming in because the blockage of the crossing of Copernick and the train. And I know that you don't control anything with the train. I get it. I understand the new regulations, but when that crossing is blocked, and it is blocked frequently, or a very long train, hi, we talked at the property. I found it to be very pleasant. I saw him one day at the property clearing, but when the crossing is blocked, and then it indeed blocks Hagerty, and then sometimes even Joy Road, the access for our emergency responders to get to us is nil. They have to go, we are out of the Warren Station, too. They have to go west to Lily, Lily north to Ann Arbor Road, under the train viaduct, back to Hagerty, back down to Joy, and then into us. If they can't respond, that, we have actually had Wesleyan Fire Department come to our home personally, and the Plymouth Township that, Fire Department that's now Hagerty north of Ann Arbor Road. When all three of these are blocked, we have no access to emergency people coming to any of us, let alone the 200-plus new people. And I personally don't think it's fair. We are the only subdivision in Canton that fall under that criteria of not having access to responders to us. Now, we're throwing 200-plus more people into that mix, and if you're on the east side of the track, and you're having a heart attack, or your house is on fire, and the train's sitting there, we're doomed. It's just scary. It's downright scary. So, here on Township, and I wrote a letter and I put it in there, here on Township recently added cameras at their railroad crossing because they had such a problem in Woodhaven, that the cameras can now be detected by the dispatchers when a crossing is blocked, so that they can reroute the emergency vehicles. There is an app that you can download in here on Township to tell you when it's going, if it's blocked, and how to get around it in the township. And I implore you, if you're going to rezon it or not rezon it, please investigate doing cameras, doing apps, doing something for our protection, because we don't have public access to emergency responders. The second thing is, and I put it in my letter also, that townships and cities can request a quiet zone at crossings. It is regulation that trains blast their horns four times at each crossing. Well, you count how many trains? I tried to count one day, and I lost count by 9:30 in the morning. You try to count how many trains come through there in a given day. That's a lot of horns. And seeing that this is all residential, zoned or not rezoned, if you as a township would request a quiet zone for that crossing, I think that would give us a lot more quality of life than what we currently have, even with all these trees being removed and everything that I'm upset about, because I'm a tree hugger, and if I could sit in your trees, I would. But, you know, it's like, it's, it's critical that we can't get emergency access to us. It's critical that the trains are always blasting. I would like Dan to speak about how the sewer is being tied in, because when we spoke, you were tying it into us at Kaiser. Kaiser floods anyway, okay? So, now we've got more coming into us, so I'm like, okay, that's kind of a concern. And the amount of new traffic since the Commerce and Copernick Light Industrial, it's called Copernick Tech Center, has gone up. The traffic coming off of Hagerty is horrible, and I implore you to do a traffic study for left-turn lanes there, because daily, there is problems at Hagerty and Copernick. Now, we're adding 200-plus new people. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeff, at what point would, would public safety get involved in a project like this? It wouldn't be this early in the proposal stage, would it?
Well, I mean, it's an existing situation. You know, we'll pass her letter and concerns on to Director Meyer and see if that's something that the Public Safety Department needs to address from a safety standpoint.
On both police and fire?
Yes.
I mean, in terms of...
Public safety, the director's over, police and fire.
Well, in terms of the design, you know, would they ever, would they ever get a look at this design and say, "Well, jeez, how would we have to get to there if we've got an emergency?"
Well, they already have an issue with Holiday Park relative to accessing Holiday Park. It's the same issue. So, I mean, the issue exists if there's blockage and getting them to them. That's why there's coordinated services with adjacent townships, too. You know, Plymouth Township and Westland respond when we can't, you know, if there's something like that. But, I will, I'm not sure what the, you know, the breadth of the issue is, and whether or not public safety has looked at this in the past, and whether or not they need to look at it again. So, we'll pass on the concerns and Mrs. Broom's letter to Mr. Meyer.
Do you have anything to add to that?
I do. I want to address both of the things. The first thing is, is I will 100% support these guys in any action towards that, the public safety thing, because I absolutely, that's 100, that's 100% concern for them, and obviously, for myself, if I have resident, residents living there, excuse me. On the sewer thing, my engineer is here. I'd like him just to, a couple, three sentences, explain that part of her concern as well, if that's okay?
Yes. Yeah, come on up, sir.
We're talking sanitary sewer, not storm sewer.
Well, explain both.
I got the impression you're talking about storm sewer. If you're talking about flooding, right? Well, the sanitary sewer, the township did their own studies. Township's consultant did their own study to show that there wouldn't be an issue with capacity in sanitary sewer. So, I haven't done any in-depth studies on that further than...
Well, when they do, if they get to the point of they're putting together an engineered site plan, they'll have to address the depth of the sewer and those kinds of things from an actual pipe design.
What I believe they've examined is the existing pipe system sizes and slopes have the capacity to carry the additional loading, you would, I guess you'd say, from a development like this. And I think they said that it was adequate for the maximum allowable density, correct, Jeff?
Up to 128, right.
Right. So, and we're only at 90, so we don't anticipate an issue with sanitary sewer capacity. As far as the storm sewer goes...
I was going to say, explain to them all the storm sewers.
Yeah. As far as the storm sewer goes, when you have a rain event, and say you have a significant rain event, all that water in your subdivision just goes directly into the pipes and goes into that little tiny creek that comes, cuts through your subdivision. In this case, we have this, we will be designing this pond for the purpose of detaining and holding those storm events for a period of time. detaining and holding those storm events for a period of time, uh, different events, different periods of time. So 24 hours for a pretty good-sized storm event, 40 hours, I believe, for a, the maximum-designed storm event, a 100-year storm. So the water that comes off this site shouldn't get into your system until your system is drained out theoretically. So we would hope to design it so that would not ever be an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I see another hand back there. Come on up. Sorry, we don't have a roving mic for you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Bolton. I live at 7953 Kaiser. And my one question is, you can see all these people that have turned out. We do not want this to go forward. There have been many letters written concerning that. And I'm wondering if this is gonna do any good. Is this going to go ahead regardless of what we say or how we voice our opinion? Is this already a done deal? And what we say or care matters to no one. I need to have that answered.
Well, I would, I would say if you've followed any of our meetings in the past when we've had public hearings, you'll see that we do very much listen to what folks have to say. We listen, listen to all sides. And we do have an issue to discuss as, as to yea or nay on something like this. And I would say it's not a done deal. So I appreciate, you know, your, your concern on that, but we're here for a purpose. And everyone up here and staff plan on doing their best to do the best for the community, for the township. So for, you, without being antagonistic, because it almost, it almost appears as if you're accusing us of...
No, no, that's not my intent. I just have a question.
I appreciate your concern, but we want to hear, and that's the purpose of the public hearing, we want to hear what people have to say. And we will put that together to formulate our decision as to the viability of this project.
And, and the Planning Commission's a recommending body. This is a rezoning application. So irregardless of what the Planning Commission, you know, recommends tonight, it still has to have two readings at the, at the board level if it gets passed the Planning Commission tonight. So part of the process is to hold a public hearing, to take public comments so that the applicant can address the, the concerns that brought up, so that the Planning Commission can weigh whether or not those, those concerns have been addressed properly or not. So that's what their role is, is they have to weigh, you know, the information, you know, in terms of looking at the overall, you know, you know, township, you know, development patterns as a whole, and whether or not this, this application is justified and whether or not it will cause any adverse impacts if approved. What they want to make sure is that any, any, any property that's rezoned or changed fits into the area and makes sense from a planning perspective, but then any impacts associated with it that are also addressed. So that's what their, that's what their role is, is to, is to take that information and, and weigh it and then make a recommendation.
I appreciate that. And my concern was that this is a done deal, and why are we here? I appreciate what you said, but I'm just very concerned about that. And with seeing all the clearing that had gone on, on the property, that was a lot of the feeling was, well, they've already decided what they're going to do, otherwise they wouldn't have cleared all this. You did answer that question, and you cleared that up. But I still have a little concern there that what we say and want isn't gonna really factor in a whole lot when you've got big dollars saying, well, this is what we want. Just take that into consideration. I don't mean to be antagonizing.
Okay, well, Mr. Very has had no discussions with the Planning Commission. The only discussions that have been is whether or not, have been with me relative to him to make an application in terms of how he should proceed with the application. So as staff, I do kind of the initial vetting of the application. And, you know, I have no decision-making authority, but I, I look at it from a master plan standpoint. We look at it from an overall land use standpoint. You know, we look at our general planning principles, and that's where staff makes their recommendation. But the public hearing, we never get this many people for a public hearing, okay? So you ought to be proud of yourselves for having this many people come out and making sure that all of that information is presented and giving Mr. Very an opportunity to address that. So you've put Mr. Green in a very uncomfortable spot because he can't answer your question because they haven't discussed it yet.
Well, that's why I don't know that. That's why I asked the question.
You need to listen to their discussion after the public hearing. They want to hear from you first. Once the public hearing is closed, then they'll go to the Planning Commission and they'll either ask more questions. They may ask me questions. They may ask Mr. Very questions. They may ask themselves questions. And they'll deliberate what type of, of, you know, information they need to come to a recommendation. Okay?
When would the final decision on this project be made, or can you even specify right now?
Well, the Planning Commission will look at it tonight and hopefully make a recommendation. If a recommendation is made one way or another, if they make a recommendation to approve, then it'll go on to the township board for first reading at the end of the month. Okay? If they make a recommendation to deny, then Mr. Very has to determine whether or not he wants to move forward to the board level and take his chances at the board and see whether or not the board will want to do something differently than what the Planning Commission's recommending. So we don't know what's happening yet until the Planning Commission makes a recommendation. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. Come on, I'm, I'll, I'll get back to you.
How you doing? I'm Leonard Posh. I live at 7823 Kaiser. I back up to the property. Back in the, I moved in in 81. Um, and at that point, the train was pretty quiet because we have dense woods, okay? What you're planning here is concrete and buildings. They're gonna bounce noise, plus cars, it's gonna bounce all over the place. It's gonna amplify. You're gonna have standing waves. That's where noise amplifies, and then you have loud sections and quiet sections. That's just not gonna work. They cleared out the woods already, and we already have higher noise levels. And, and I back up to this. Now, in the early 80s, they cleared the entire field. I could see the expressway. And you could, you could feel the house vibrate. You could have glasses in the, you know, cupboards and stuff vibrate from just the noise from the train. And as trains do sit there, we have to back up and then turn around in somebody's driveway to get out, you know, to get around the train. So I'm kinda against this whole thing. Plus, if somebody's living there, and they're not gonna put up with that sound. And they're not gonna pay $1,600 a month for that kind of housing. They're gonna leave. And it's gonna end up Section 8 or worse. It'd be abandoned. So I'm kinda totally against it.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
My name is Jenna Andrews, and I live at 39765 Lynn Street. And I have a question for the developer, actually two. There, you said you sent the information letter to 30 houses?
All the ones that are adjacent to the property.
Okay. Because I would be very curious, there's over 550 houses in the neighborhood that are adjacent along with the other apartment complex, what the turnout would be if everybody was informed from the beginning. Um, I also have a question about how long you think this project will be until it will be complete?
Good. First, Jeff, you want to explain the notice?
I think Mr. Very sent out informational letters. Uh, we send out, uh, public hearing notices to everyone within 300 feet of the, of the property. That includes residents of apartments. That includes occupants of houses and owners of houses. So everybody within, that's within 300 feet of the boundary, uh, you know, would have received a notification from the township, a public hearing notice.
So my, my letter was a courtesy to the people directly adjacent, knowing that the township would send out for the people that were 300 feet, up to 300 feet. As far as the time can, the time of the construction, my guess would be somewhere between two and two and a half years from the day we start moving dirt to the day the last C of O is issued.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you for your, your comments up there. Wow, a lot of people are, are being sparked here. Yes, sir.
My name's Paris Fu. Um, I live at 39938 Lynn Street. Um, I'm also the, I'm also the author of the petition that was emailed to the county, or to the city on behalf of the people that could not attend. I'm not sure if it's resident, what resident letter number that is. Um, I, you can verify if my petition made it through the email. I'm not sure.
They all received it by email.
What's that? You did, okay, perfect. So, um, I'm not going to reiterate what was in the petition. Everyone can read. And, um, I've sent it out to many people here, which I encourage them to, um, come and speak their voices because I am a commercial, commercial loan processor for Citibank, or I was previously. So I am very familiar with apartment zoning. So, um, Mr. Very, I understand everything that you're saying. And my wife was actually one of the two calls that you mentioned about the speaking for 20 minutes because we are very informed. So in, in addition to what I stated in the petition, which I have over 100 signatures on, my other question to actually inform everyone here as well is, is there anything stopping you from selling the ownership of this community to someone else? Like I, we understand that you're trying not to, and these are your own words, not to have a Canton crossings to have whatever annotation to a negative community whatsoever. There is, as far as I know, there is no way to actually prevent you from selling it to the lowest or highest or whoever bidder. So I just want to, I want us to hear what you have to say about that. Do you intend to keep this? Do you intend to sell it to the lowest bidder or intend to keep it to the highest bidder? I think everyone would like to know that. Thank you. And if Mr. Very would like to speak to that, that would be great.
Thank you.
Our intention is to keep it in our, in our real estate portfolio.
Okay. Thank you. I saw another hand. Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name's Kelly DeRosie. I live at 7775 Kaiser. I also back up to those woods. Um, nobody has spoken about the nature. I know it's not part of the nature preserve, but by golly, I've lived there since 1990. And what they've already done to that nature and taken in building the houses that they've built and, you know, it, they've already taken away. Now they've tore all this out. The, the days that I do drive that way, I, it's much easier for me to go out Copernick to go to work. I, I work in downtown Plymouth. Much easier for me to go out. But no, I listen for that train. Because if that train's going, by golly, I go out the other way, all the way out the front. And that's what all these other folks are gonna have to do. And like, I, I'm very concerned. Who, who's gonna buy that property? So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Grace Morgan. I live at 44452 Meadow Creek Lane. It's not in this area, but my concern is, is about the pond. Is it a pond or is it a detention basin? We have...
It's a detention basin.
Okay, so it will remain quite...
It's a permanent water level. There will be a permanent water level. It's required by the county to have a permanent water level in all of their stormwater basins.
Thank you. Yes.
Rich Wolf. I live at 40055 Copernick. It's my understanding that the access to this development is going to be right across the street from our driveway. You wouldn't believe the amount of cars now that turn around all hours of the day and night when the train is across the tracks. We have lights coming in the house all the time. You add 200 more folks, how many more cars are we gonna have to put up with? Is there any way we can put a barrier across our driveway so it can't be used as a turnaround?
It's up to you. There's no reason why you can't put something at the end of your driveway to prevent it from a turnaround. But if another driveway is gonna go in on the north side, that gives them someplace else to turn around. So if there's a paved entrance, if there's a paved driveway there, they're more than likely to use the paved driveway to turn around in rather than your driveway. It'd be easier to turn around.
Then we wouldn't be getting all the lights all hours of the night either.
Well, we can look at the alignment of the driveway when they come in, if they ever come in for site plan. We don't know the exact alignment. Mr. Very said that he was probably gonna move that main road over and flip the pond in the driveway. So where it's shown now is gonna be flipped probably to the other side, and the pond is probably gonna be closer to the railroad tracks. Okay? So we don't know the exact final design. This is a conceptual design at this point. So nothing is set in stone other than there's 90 units in this general configuration. Okay?
Thank you.
Jeff, is there still a, a restriction as to how long a railroad can block a road? Do they get rid of that? I think it was a five, five-minute rule a long time ago.
I, I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with the regulations.
Yes, come on up.
My name's Gail Owens. I live at 8416 Orhan. And regarding that question, the railroad had their lobbyists get that law repealed. We used to have...
Five minutes, right?
Where they would be fined, but they got that repealed years ago. So my concern is, is with, we, we can have all three of those roads blocked for like 10 hours at a time. Four hours, they block, they sit. And I mean, that has nothing to do with him, but with those additional units there, they all come. I live on Orhan, and it's, I would like speed bumps put in. They fly down our street to get out to Echols. And it's, it's a, it's a hazard with children in the neighborhood. And to have 180 more people because it, they do block that. And I don't, I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but since they started working in the crossings, and since they started clearing out, our neighborhood has been rats. We're finding dead rats in the neighborhood. And that's a concern also that, and people here, majority of us are concerned that it's going to turn into another crossings and we're gonna have crime. They are in, we had, the police were, during the summer, were patrolling our neighborhoods by bike at night because we had so many thefts and break-ins. They put cameras up. We had a meeting with the police because of our concerns with the crime and drugs. And the police are over at the crossings continually. And that's basically what he's fighting is people are concerned it's going to turn into another. Hard for us to believe people are gonna pay $1,600, $2,000 a month to live next door to a railroad. They can put all the insulation they want in. We have, majority of us have insulated our homes, put in new windows. And to pay that high of a rent, you can insulate your home all you want to. Like they say, the ground shakes and stuff. It's not gonna be a high-end neighborhood next to a railroad track.
Okay.
That's the concern. And like I said, I don't know if it's coincidence or what, but now we have dead rats showing up in our neighborhood.
Sorry to hear that.
And the, the people, you know, the riffraff and stuff wandering the neighborhood. And it's just, it's, that's a concern for...
There are, there are issues there that, you know, public safety would probably need to be informed on. But I do thank you for your, your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If, um, we've touched a lot of topics on this. Um, if there's nothing new, I would prefer you didn't comment. If you've got something that we have not touched, we've got the time for you to, yes, come on up then.
My name's Morgan Kates. I live at 39934 Copernick. Um, it is regarding the traffic, but nobody has mentioned this. Um, my house is the second house in from a stop sign at Holly and Copernick. People constantly blow that stop sign. My husband and I will take our groceries in, and we will watch three, four, five cars blow that stop sign. They do not make a complete stop. My husband's car, he parks in the street, has been hit. My neighbor next door who parks, who's farther down the street, her car has been hit in the street. Now bringing this complex in, we're gonna have all these, a lot more traffic coming through.
Have you called public safety on any of this?
Yes, they've come out to my house.
Generally, if there's a lot of speeding and a lot of, a lot of stop blowing, they'll do selective enforcement out there.
I have, when that happened, and my... When that happened, and my neighbor has called about this, like I said, both of our vehicles have been hit. I have not seen...
You need to request the selective enforcement unit to come out and do selective enforcement.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, somebody has to come out there and basically, you know, and sit there during the day and catch people blowing the stop signs and speeding. Because what happens is, if they know there's somebody out there doing enforcement, then that helps to deter that, at least temporarily. So, I mean, the selective enforcement unit needs to come out and patrol. So, it's not just responding to somebody hitting your car. It's actually somebody being out there for a lengthy period of time enforcing.
And I've made that comment about that.
Well, we'll pass it on. Since it's part of a public hearing, we'll pass it on to public safety, to Mr. Meyer. Okay?
Thank you for your comments. Is it a new one? Because you've been up already.
I remember the thing I forgot.
All right, very quickly, very quickly.
Madeline Reex, 39816 Lynn Street. I remembered what I forgot. So, it's more a question for me, and I'm sure other people are curious. You've made all these wonderful statements about the nicety that you plan on making. How is that enforced? Once the zoning commission, once the planning people say, yeah, hey, let's stamp this for residential, how is that enforced that we know the things that you've said here, the things that you've promised to various people in different conversations, the fact that you're gonna put in that thick insulation, how do we know that that will actually be constructed? Who's gonna monitor that?
Okay, there are certain things. This is a conditional rezoning. Okay, as I mentioned at the beginning, this is a little bit different than a standard rezoning because it has some assurances within a development agreement that it will be recorded against the property. Things like insulation in the walls and extra glass, I mean, that's up to him as a property owner and manager to determine what's best for him. What we can, what, basically what the planning commission's looking at tonight and the guarantees that the planning commission's looking at tonight as voluntary conditions that he's proposing is what you see on the wall in terms of what the development will look like, the maximum number of units, the maximum length of the buildings, and those kinds of things. You know, the buffers, you know, in terms of what he'll maintain in terms of the buffers, those types of things. We don't normally look at those kind of details at a zoning level. But in that particular case, Mr. Very wanted to do that to make sure people, to make sure that, you know, that the planning commission knew that he wasn't gonna go up to the 128 units he was allowed under standard R6 zoning. That he wasn't going to just come in and level all, every single tree on the property and start over. That he was gonna maintain the buffers along, you know, behind the existing subdivision. You know, that he was going to basically do what this plan says. So as part of that, if it's approved and the board ultimately approves it, that gets recorded. And that's a development agreement that gets recorded. It's good for two years. He has two years to act on that plan to get his site plan approved and get it under construction. If he fails to do that within two years, then that zoning reverts back. Okay? So that's the difference in a conditional rezoning. It's, it's basically zoning based on, it's voluntary statement of conditions and the conceptual plan that he's provided. So that's the only thing that the township can guarantee. You know, we can't, you know, he's, he's telling you he's going to put additional insulation in and put additional windows and those kinds of things in. He has to meet all of our general, you know, zoning guidelines in terms of building materials. It has to be 50% brick, you know, it has to, you know, meet a certain height. It has to meet a certain length, all of those kinds of things.
Can you mind drawing on the screen a list of statements of condition?
Well, they probably won't, if I throw them on the screen, they won't read it. I'll just, I'll read the basic conditions, because if I throw them on the screen, they won't be able to see them.
Would you like me to read them?
Let's get to the agreement here.
The total number of units will be 90, which is 38 less than the total allowed. 128 in R6 zoning.
Right. Right, so that's the first condition. The second condition, maintain a 25-foot-wide landscape buffer along Holiday Park subdivision. Existing trees in good condition within the buffer will remain. And replacement trees will be placed in, at buffer to fill voids. Three, construct an eight-foot hard surface multipurpose path through the site which will connect to a sidewalk extension along the north side of Copperneck. Sidewalk connection within Copperneck Road shall provide connection to the regional bike trail along 275. Four, each proposed building will not exceed 150 feet in length and will not consist of more than six units. Exterior materials may be dimensional shingles, brick and vinyl siding. So those are the four basic conditions that he's placed upon himself that are more restrictive than what the zoning code would allow.
Thank you. I did not understand that that's what that was when it was right at the beginning.
Okay.
Food for thought for you. Consider making your entrance a two-lane in and out with a turnaround before you have your one lane to solve the problem of people turning around in people's driveways. And also, another food for thought. Have you done any research into how the shaking from the railroad will eventually affect your foundations over time to maintain the quality of your units? Food for thought. You don't have to answer that? That's just me throwing that out. I know it's wrong.
That is a good question, though. Has, has that consideration been part of the foundation engineering?
I have had, actually, yes. I have had conversations with our architect, and he is in process of validating our conversation with some engineering and stuff. And we do have to do our Phase Two environmental on there still for the financing. So we still have stuff to do, you know, to make sure everything's okay. The groundwater was one of the things, based on her, I forgot your name, wherever you are.
Yeah. Madeline?
When we saw that, I mean, we had to do the Phase One anyways, or the Phase Two anyways, but that only exasperated the fact that we wanna make sure there was any groundwater issues there.
Thank you. Anything new?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Last call? Pond, 7705 Kaiser. I'd like to talk about the pond. You said that this is designed to retain the water until evaporation?
No, it connects to a county storm system.
Okay, so it will drain off?
Yeah, it has to have, it has to have a physical connection to a county drain. The county requires it to be restricted so it doesn't flood the county drain. So it holds back water for a period of time and allows sediments to fall out in what they call a four bay. And then the permanent water, that's why you see two, two cells in that. So the first flush of the storm will go into the first port of the basin. That settles out, so the sediments clean the water before it goes into the county drain system. And then there's a permanent water level, which has, does have some permanent water level in it. But based on, when it gets down to a certain point, you know, it drains to the county drain system. So there's, there's a formula that they have to use based on the county guidelines. It's a county stormwater guideline. The county reviews the stormwater permit. You know, that's not a township ordinance, that's a Wayne County, you know, guideline for stormwater maintenance.
So the water will be circulated in some way, though, the permanent water?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Generally, generally it becomes a natural system. The guidelines require the banks of the ponds to be vegetated, and a certain percentage of the pond has to be planted with aquatics. So essentially, it turns into almost a natural wetland system once it grows in. So in certain cases, depending on the size of the pond, certain developers, certain homeowner associations may put aerators in there just to keep the algae and things out. So it really depends, every pond is a little bit different in terms of how it functions. And, you know, and what the size and the actual depth of it is. But the county does require a permanent water level in there. And the purpose of that is to prevent mosquitoes. So if you have it too shallow, then the mosquitoes are gonna breed. If you keep a permanent water level of so, so many feet in there, the mosquitoes aren't gonna breed in that water.
So this won't be a mosquito breeder?
No, they're designed not to be mosquito breeders by having the permanent water level in there. If you have a lot of mud and you have a very shallow water, that's where you get mosquitoes breeding. So if it's deeper water, they will not breed in the deeper water.
Okay, so there's, and there's probably also a requirement to not allow, not allow cattails or other weeds to grow in there?
Sometimes those just grow in naturally, so, especially fragmites and things. So we require a two-year maintenance bond on the ponds to make sure they get vegetated as designed and that the native stuff grows in so that it keeps the non-native stuff out. But what happens is, sometimes you have to go in and do maintenance on the pond to get the cattails out of there after a certain amount of time. So, things, you know, seeds blow through the, you know, the...
Oh, sure, of course.
You know, through the air, and they fall, and they, you know, they take root.
Birds.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Oh, did you have a question directly for the developer?
Yes, I do.
Okay, yes, go ahead. About the other, the other properties that are in your portfolio, you have others, and there are ones that you've developed yourself? This map here, it shows a Y at the north end.
It's a turnaround for public safety. So instead of a cul-de-sac, they've done a Y turnaround.
So not a circle?
No, it's a Y turnaround. It means all the radiuses of a perp light truck.
Larger vehicles can turn around at the end of the street.
Okay, school buses?
Service trucks, fire trucks, you know.
So it's not...
It's a service turnaround, right?
It's not designed to be a connector, right?
No, it's just a turnaround, so.
All right. Are you the owner of the property north of that?
No.
The apartments?
No.
That's all.
Yeah, the property to the north, the Canton Crossing, that property is now under a different management. The, the owner of that hired a new property manager that's local. So you, over the next couple of years, you'll see some substantial changes, not only to the quality of the construction, but probably the quality of the tenants in there. So, based on what we know of that property manager, they manage the Uptown Apartments and Cherry Hill Village. They're very good property, you know, managers. You know, hopefully we'll see good things come about from a change in management, so.
Ma'am, ma'am? Yeah. The, the meeting, do you have something that's absolutely different than what we've talked about? All right.
All right. When they started bringing up about the storm sewers and stuff, will having these additional ones, will this negatively affect our storm sewage, you know, where we have flooding and stuff?
It cannot, it cannot adversely impact any off-site and property. It may not improve your situation, but it cannot make it worse.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have heard a lot of different angles, a lot of questions, and a lot of comments. So I think we've heard enough to go to the commission on this. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubrin, support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Very, if you could stay, stay close by. I'm gonna start down here with Commissioner Graham Hudak and ask, what are your, your comments about this proposal?
May I ask some questions?
You sure can.
Just like you started the wrong end.
Yeah. We're all glad she's gonna start, yeah.
Okay, first of all, this is very hard because, I mean, the planning commission, the planning, you know, Jeff has done a great job, and the developer, Mr. Very, has also done a great job. And it's very hard. And everybody, just to let you know, I mean, this was light industrial, and the group considered moving it to residential because we considered wanting more green space in the township. So that's why that thought was put there. And just also let you know, even if it stays light industrial, there's nothing stopping from all the vegetation being cut down. I mean, that's, everybody knows that, and that's stated also. We all know that that's the, you know, whatever the owner wants to do with it. A couple of things. So responder access is a concern. That's a very big concern, especially because that does build up. I'm looking at the traffic study that was, actually, before I say it. Can the petition that they talked about be entered into the record? We didn't see it. Could that be entered?
Yeah, we didn't see that.
It's part of the record. Connie's got it part of the record already.
Okay, because we didn't see it as part of this.
Not in our packet.
Well, it was emailed to you today, that's why.
Oh.
We got it today via email. It was forwarded on to you via email. It would be part of, it'll be entered into the minutes and part of the record as public comment.
And then, Mr. Very, you had an initial, initial statement. Was that, if that's all written down, if we could enter that as part of the record also, that would help them?
The same as he did will be taken down as part of the minutes, so.
I know, when you enter it in part of the record, it's word for word. It's easier for Joan to just put the whole thing and attach the whole thing, rather than trying to figure out what to take out of it.
Connie will, yeah, you know, Connie will do, not a verbatim transcript, but she'll do a detailed transcript in the minutes.
Responder access is a concern. Another thing, so I look at the traffic study, and it says that if we do light industrial, the average daily traffic will add 803 vehicles per day. And if we use apartments, it's saying 669. There's a couple of questions around this. That's, that's how much it adds, which means it will probably put it over the threshold. What's our threshold for paving a road now? Isn't it 1,000?
Thousand trips per day. That portion of Copperneck Road, I don't know how many existing trips around that day. It may already be beyond that threshold. One of the things is, if there's an existing deficiency in a road, we can't make anybody that, you know, do an off-site improvement for something that is already deficient. This is an issue that we need to take up, probably with Wayne County, and coordinate with Westland on getting that road improved, based on its existing condition. What we can't require is anybody coming in after the fact to make improvements to that road. You can make a determination of whether or not that road is adequate, whether there's adequate public facilities to support it. But if this property was industrial, you couldn't deny somebody to move ahead with industrial development either on this property.
Right.
So that's part of the conundrum here, is that we've got an existing problem over there that's existed for 30 years. And we have other, you know, township roads, you know, here and there that are unpaved. You know, why Wayne County has never ever taken action to improve that section of road? I don't know, they probably considered, even though it's a mile or a mile road, it's probably considered a local road on their, their system. We would have to evaluate that. I'll have to check with Bill, so.
Okay, because I know many across Canton are having issues with new developments and dirt roads. And many of the developers are actually paving in front of their, their developments to alleviate some of those issues. But if you even go back further into the traffic studies, I mean, you look at Hagerty Road and at Copperneck Road, if you add more traffic, you're looking at, I mean, if you get, there's grades of A through F. A is the highest and F is the lowest. I mean, we're looking at grades of F here in delayed response for LOS. So that's, I mean, like 26 seconds delay per vehicle, which adds more and more backup.
Part of that is an existing condition, though.
Right, right, which just makes it even worse, which adds more to the safety issue. I'm all for the quiet zone. How do we, does that go through your, your department to ask for a quiet zone, or?
Either the supervisor's office or public safety, so.
Another thing is, okay, sanitary sewer residence. Rats also call public safety. That's another issue they are dealing with, so you can call on that. But I guess just the big thing is just the traffic. The traffic, the dirt road, we're already having issues with dirt roads. If it stays light industrial, who would, would you be able to answer the question? How long have you had that property?
I don't own it. I have it under contract.
Contract. So Jeff, you would know more of the history. It's been light industrial for a while. Why hasn't it been developed, light industrial? Has anyone attempted or tried, or...
We have light industrial essentially to the south and the, and the west of the property. This is basically the last piece of property that hasn't been developed in the northeast sector of the township. So it's not gonna be zoned this way, it's developed this way. It's, it will be, we have demand currently for industrial development. So right now, there's very little land left for industrial development in the northeast sector of the township. So, I mean, this, you know, this land, you know, even though they may not be able to utilize the railroad track, many industrial businesses don't need to utilize the railroad track. It is close to Hagerty Road and, and all of the other industrial businesses. You know, I would anticipate that, you know, that as, as land becomes more scarce, this property becomes more valuable. It may have been an issue of the property owner may have wanted too much money for the property in the past. You know, I can't guess as to why it hasn't been developed until now.
I looked at the sewage graph also. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding that. The sewage tie-in and the capacity. What is, how close would we be to the capacity at the sewage tie-in there?
This has actually, what we did is, we did an evaluation of how much peak sewer flow would be based on the, the maximum density under R6 versus what the peak sewage flow would be under that number of acres of industrial, based on what the model currently, the sewer model currently projected for that piece of property. Basically, the, the model shows no negligible change in the capacity for sewer, in terms of the amount of sewer that flows from this property is gonna be the same or almost equal, you know, based on, you know, R6 zoning versus LI zoning, based on what the assumptions were in the model for the light industrial zoning. So basically, the model, basically, the sewer model basically takes all of the county, the township sewer lines, its trunk lines, and what feeds into them by sewer district. And it basically, it factors in a certain amount of peak sewage flow for each, for each property based on its maximum development pursuant to the zoning or master plan. So what they did is, they... So what they did is they did a comparison of what could be done under R6 zoning versus what could be done under light industrial and what's currently in the model. And they determined there was basically very little net change in the overall flow of sewer, you know, into the line.
So by keeping this light industrial, there's still a chance it could stay just a lot because they've been having difficulty for so many years getting it become, okay.
It will be developed. One way or another, it will be developed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I want to reassure the members of the public who are here tonight that we do, we do not prejudge these issues and we, you know, like Commissioner Graham Hudak said, you know, we take your concerns very seriously. So it's a tough decision and, you know, we hear what you're saying. I think we also understand that something will eventually get developed there and we want the best thing for Canton that's going to go there. So we also appreciate what Jeff says about what the projects are. It's extremely tough to sit up here. So I just want to thank all of you for your comments and your input and rest assured, we hear you. You know, we hear your concerns. A lot of them, however, there isn't a whole lot we can do. You know, we understand the concerns, but, you know, we have to evaluate the project on its merits and it's a tough position to be in.
Any particular thoughts you want to share at this point?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Just did.
Wow, no, in terms of the specific.
That was pretty specific.
I think you covered this when you first started, but I'm numbers challenged. What was the square foot for Canton Crossing, the price point as opposed to your project?
Their average price per foot, because they have multiple different units, is $112 a square foot. We're going to be at $1.15 a square foot as our average. Our smaller unit is higher. It's at $1.20. And our bigger unit is lower, at $1.13. So it averages at $1.15.
But your square footage of your unit is how big compared to their average size unit?
You got me on their average size, but they are, I believe, predominantly ones and twos. They do have some threes, but not a lot of them. We have.
One and two bedrooms, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry, three bedrooms. Our three-bedroom is a three-bedroom, two and a half bath. It's at 1,500 feet. And our ranch is a two-bedroom that's 1,273 square feet, two bath, two-bedroom.
Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Commissioner O'Conne?
A couple of things, question, a couple of questions for you, Jeff. What is, right now, it's zoned industrial?
Right.
Some, if an industrial development comes in there right now, what is the required landscape buffer between that property and the residential?
30 feet.
30 feet. And they're proposing 25?
Well, 25 feet plus, they can't be closer than 60 feet from the site boundary. With a 25-foot buffer, so I don't know what your actual setback is. So, you know, any non-residential development has to have a minimum 30-foot landscape buffer along the property line. But in order to accomplish that, generally, it has to be on a four-foot berm. It's going to be adjacent to a parking lot. They can have a parking lot 30 feet from their property line with parking lot lights. So in order to accomplish that, you pretty much have to clear the property and regrade it to get that landscape berm in. So, you know, and you could end up with a 40-foot tall building, you know, that's, you know, essentially masonry and metal, you know, compared to a maximum building height of 25 feet, you know, for a two-story, you know, townhouse type of unit. So it's just a whole different style of development. It's a whole different product. So you're looking at, it's a different impact. You're looking at semi-trucks that also have an impact on Copernick Road that would go in there. It could be a warehouse and distribution facility. And the entire side of the building could be truck docks. You know, so, I mean, there's a lot of noise associated with trucks and truck docks and those kinds of things, too. So, I mean, that's the downside to light industrial development. You know, we've basically, you know, had an industrial concern at the end of Bearin Drive that we spent about a year in court with because they came in and they started making a lot of noise where the previous tenant didn't make a whole lot of noise. And the condominiums that were on the south side of the creek were really adversely impacted. And we end up having to take them to court and getting them to agree to enclose a certain portion of their facility that dealt with their scrap metal as part of their stamping operation. So with light industrial, you can't necessarily guarantee what type of business you're going to have in there. It may be a very quiet business, but not all light industrial businesses, you know, have that impact. Light industrial also allows outside storage as long as it's screened. So as part of an outside, you know, as part of an outside storage yard, you could also have, you know, all of the vehicles and forklifts and things moving around inside that screened area. So, you know, we would try to get, you know, if something like that came in, we would try to get that area moved to the railroad side where it made more sense and to keep the quiet side near the residence. But, you know, we had no idea since we don't have any development proposed for that particular project, you know, project yet. I mean, we have very few areas in the township where we have industrial that butt up to residential. Very, very few.
And if I'm looking at the ordinance correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it depends on what kind of industrial building goes next to it, whether it's a single unit or a multi-tenant industrial building. For 15 acres, a 200,000-square-foot industrial building is not out of the question. That's.
That's probably average.
Probably average. If it was a single unit, our ordinance is calling for almost 140 parking spaces just for that one use. If it was a multi-tenant, 200,000-square-foot building, we're looking at 500 parking spaces. So to me, the impact that I see being right next to the residential, to me, is a lot less invasive being zoned residential than it is to keeping it as a industrial site. I mean, just the parking alone. At least this, the parking is broken up. There's a lot more landscaping in there.
All your units are garages, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have, we do have extra parking. Keep hitting this thing.
Everyone does that.
Everybody beats up that mic.
But talking with your hand.
I'm Italian. I got to.
You know, going back to industrial, what you said with the large semis. I mean, that would really kill that dirt road even more.
Well, and one of the biggest problems we have industrials, a lot of, you know, especially if it's warehouse and distribution or even in industrial business, they'll come in and, you know, they may be waiting to drop off or drop a load or pick up a load and those semis sit there and they idle. And then one of the biggest complaints we have, even with commercial businesses that back up to some of our residential areas, is the trucks that come in and idle. You know, you get the fumes from the diesel, you get the, just the, you know, the noise from the idling trucks. And some of that we can control, some of it we can't, you know. And it's just, it becomes an enforcement issue on controlling every single truck driver that comes in and out of that site and when they decide to come in and out of the site. From a planning perspective, it's never recommended to have industrial directly adjacent to residential. Down along Michigan Avenue, on the north side of Michigan Avenue, where we do have some industrial that butts up to residential, it's light industrial research by design. The light industrial research has bigger setbacks, bigger, you know, buffers. This is not a light industrial research zone. It's a standard LI zone. So, which doesn't have the same performance standards that light industrial research has.
A couple of questions for the applicant. Will you have any kind of clubhouse? No clubhouses. And the units will have garages?
Yep.
All of them?
All of them.
All of them will have garages?
Yep. And they're all one-car, but they're all oversized one-car. Like the ranch unit, the garage is almost a square footage of a two-car garage. It's 330 square feet, where a two-car is 400, but we just don't have the room to put the double door on it.
Okay. You know, I think with regards to the statement of the conditions, I think, Jeff, I think it's, with these, there's four of them. Some of them are kind of vague. I would really like to see that those tighten up a little bit before it goes to the board. Things like stating that every unit will have a garage, that there won't be a clubhouse or, you know, whatever it is. You won't be, you won't have a building taller than, you know, so high. I would also encourage you.
Well, the zoning district, the zoning district itself restricts those things. So the garage, the plan shows all of the units with garages. So he doesn't have to state it because the conceptual plan does. The maximum building height in R6 is 25 feet or two stories. So he can't go higher than that under R6. So what the zoning, conditional zoning can't do is grant any variances to the zoning code. So what he's done is he's restricted things in there that the zoning code doesn't address.
You know, and I would also encourage to look at, see if there's a way of increasing the landscape buffer between the residential and where you are. Where right now, you're, we're stating 25-feet-wide landscape buffer along Holiday Park subdivision. Let's see if there's some room in there. Let's see if we can squeeze out some more. Let's see if we can get it up a little bit.
Okay, for the benefit of the planning commission, a conditional rezoning is a take-it-or-leave-it proposition. Okay? It's no negotiation. You accept it or you reject it. He can always come back and change his conditions and have you rehear them, but any addition, change to the conditions he makes has to be voluntary. He may take input from the thing here and he may decide before he goes to the board to make changes to his condition.
That's, Jeff, that's why I'm asking the applicant. Hopefully, these are things that you're going to look into. And what I'm saying is on record. So hopefully, the board will take what we have and what our comments are, the neighbors' comments, the board's comments, and look to see if you've made any changes or any, whatever it is, to your plan.
But your recommendation tonight is based on what you have in front of you.
I understand that, Jeff. Again, to the applicant, I would encourage you to take a look at a lot of what the residents have said today and look at things like, I heard a lot about the trees going away. Okay, you're proposing a 25-foot landscape buffer. That's terrific. Maybe you can go above and beyond. Just suggestions, okay? Because I'm assuming that all these people are going to show up in front of the township board also. Okay, and I encourage you guys to, again, we're just the recommending board, okay?
Oh, yeah, so.
You, there's two public readings, correct, before a vote?
Let's let them take a vote first and then I'll tell you what the next step is.
We haven't gotten that far.
I don't know what they're doing.
Haven't gotten that far.
They haven't voted.
So again, to me, I think change this to the residential, I think, is the right thing to do. I think it's less impact than building a 200,000-square-foot industrial building next to them. That's all I got.
Okay, all right, thanks. Myself, I went back and forth on this. The, looking as a consumer, I said to myself, would I buy or rent a unit that close to a railroad or an expressway? Probably not. In fact, I had an opportunity when my wife and I were looking to buy a house here and didn't realize where we were until we looked out the back window of the house. The real estate company was showing us and I saw these cars zooming by and it turned out to be I-275. And I said, let's go. Which leads me to the question of the things that you'll do to keep it attractive to consumers that want to come here, that want to rent there, that they're not, you know, looking out, you know, or that that's not such a negative. I think farther back into the project, it probably is not going to be so much. But the ones bordering, I noticed you see, you have a walking path there. I mean, I'm assuming that there's going to be a certain number of trees. Obviously, we don't have but a preliminary site plan here. So what kind of things are you, would you propose to do to buffer that?
Well, as I said earlier, we will have along the entire western line, the northern line, and returning back to that bend, we will have an eight-foot vinyl privacy fence on it. So you will have that visual separation.
We have a fence, but are you leaving, are you leaving trees as you go?
Everything we don't have to cut down, we are not cutting down.
Everything you don't have to cut down either for infrastructure or?
That's it. I mean, what a lot of people in the public don't understand is it costs us a lot of money to cut down trees. We don't want to cut down anything we don't have to. And obviously, if I can have a 35-foot tall mature oak tree versus a, you know, 12-foot one that's two and a half inches in diameter, I'd much rather have the tall oak tree. So we plan on keeping everything we can. On that buffer of 25 feet, I got to see what the infrastructure, because it's, we're picking it up in that corner and it's got to go north. It's got to go someplace. So the reason why we came up with 25 is that still left us 25 feet from the edge of that and the building to run anything that we had to run. And after we leave what we, what stays and then we go ahead and fill in the spaces in between with all of our replacement trees, it'll thicken up. I mean, obviously, it's not going to thicken up in a year, but it eventually will thicken up. And we want to leave it natural. I don't want to put grass in there. Just leave it the way it is right now. That's what our intention is. And we plan on making it a really beautiful site. I don't know if you've all gotten the elevations of the product or not. No? I mean, I can give it to you. I have it. If you want to glance at it real quick or I know you'll get it when we come back.
Well, we've seen some of your other work and I'm assuming it's going to be at least.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Like I said, we put the same thing in our rental units as we do in our houses. And you saw, you know, the village turned out really nice, along with all the other developments we've done in the township in the last 22 years.
The other end of the spectrum for me is more on a positive note. When I looked at the master plan of that being light industrial and visualizing an industrial client coming in to us and realizing that we're all about buffering. We're all about buffering adjacent uses that are extreme to each other. And we would have to put a big wall there with an industrial client. And I think to myself, well, okay, so all of those houses along there, bordering that, would have to look at some big wall as opposed to another house and trees and other residential amenities. And I thought to myself, this is a good idea. You know, this is one of the situations that, you know, in the first glance, yeah, it should be industrial because we had all the other industrial. But now that Canton is so developed, it looks like this is out of place, quite honestly, as a light industrial piece. So, you know, my only reservation was what I just brought out about the other side, the west side. It's like, okay, who's, you know, I'm sure there's somebody out there that is going to want to live there and not be annoyed by the traffic and whatnot. It just won't be me. The positive side to this is I think it is better off as residential than it is light industrial. And I think, I think that people will agree in time. They probably don't today. But I think in time, it would be. So I'm all for it myself. Any further comments from the commission? Yes, go ahead.
Just one other thing to consider, you know, for the board is if I were a company, just based on the traffic studies that you look at and how backed up it is at Hagerty and Copernick and Copernick in that area, I mean, that's a hard place to get in. And I'm wondering, would a company really, I mean, what could they do to mitigate that? That's a very difficult place for light industrial to go. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know.
And apparently, it might be one of the obstacles. And again, we don't know.
Right.
We don't know what, you know, would prevent somebody from coming in. But that might have been something that they looked at and said, hey, how do we, how do we get in and out of here effectively to do our business? But that's not for us to decide. I think we have to look at the bigger picture for Canton. Herman, you know, is this a better use than what we originally had planned in the master plan? And I think it is. That's just me.
My name is Julie Kroll. I'm with Felicity Manning Rink. We did the traffic impact study.
Excuse me? Public hearing is closed.
Unless, just hang on, unless they have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you?
She's with me.
Oh, I apologize. Please.
And I just wanted to address the trustee's question about the level of service and the operations at Copernick and Hagerty. You had a question about the poor level of service existing. So did you have the traffic study in front of you? You're referring to table two and three, I believe?
Yes, table three has level all Fs.
Right, so what we found, which was actually very interesting, was when we talked to Wayne County Department of Public Services, who operates the signal, when we looked at the signal timing permit out there, they're running the same timing for 24 hours a day, which is very unusual because you have peaks in the AM and the PM and then you also have an off-peak that are completely different. So when we ran the existing operations, that's what is going on there right now. So what we did is we optimized the signal timing based on the peaks that you're seeing in the AM, the PM, and the off-peak. And we recommended updating the signal timing to provide signal timing plans for the AM and the PM and the off-peak that are different than what's running out there right now. So when we ran that, that's what you're seeing in table four. So if we went out there right now and updated the signal timing, you're going to get Bs and Cs. and Cs, and not Es and Fs that you're seeing out there right now. So then when we added the site traffic, and that's under Table 7, if we don't do anything to the signal timing, and we leave it the way it is, we're going to end up with that poor level of service. And then when we update the signal timing, as you see in Table 8, we're back to Bs and Cs. So, we actually reached out to Wayne County to let them know that, hey, you guys are running 24-hour signal timings, which is atypical, and that they should probably take a look at updating their timing permits to make it better right now. So we did that when we did this study back in July.
Have they changed?
Get any response from Wayne County?
I have not.
Imagine my surprise.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll have Bill Surcheck follow up with them on that.
Thank you.
A lot of times Wayne County, unless they get a complaint, they don't mess around with their signal timings, we'll, we'll get with them on that.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you for that. Commission? Any further discussion?
I have to say, I'm, you know, I would rather see a development like this than a light industrial development as well. So, you know, it's tough to, tough to make that call, but-
I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Oken? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that I move to approve the request to conditional rezone tax parcels 004-99-0002-003 and 004-99-0007-003 from LI Light Industrial District to R6, Single Family Attached Residential District, subject to the statement of condition and consent plan voluntarily offered by the applicant.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Oken, and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on the motion?
Sure. Commissioner Graham Hudek?
No.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. So this goes forward to the trustees, and-
Okay, yeah, so the next step, now that they voted to recommend approval, the next step would be forwarding the application onto the township board for a first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning code, zoning map. Likely, this will occur at the second board meeting of the month, which should be, I think, the 26th of September for the first reading. You can call our office and double-check to make sure that that's going to go forward on the 26th, but at this point, that would be the schedule.
But they receive a notice like they did for this meeting?
No, they-
The 300 feet?
No, it's not a public hearing. It would be on the board's general calendar. They can contact our office to verify the date and time, so.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, folks, for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for participating. We're going to, we're going to give a few minutes for the room to clear before we proceed.
Take a short break.
You want to take a break? All right, yeah, let's take a, a quick break. Five minutes.
Yes, okay, all right. Okay, thank you, all right.
Well, you know, it's going to be, it's a public safety issue, really.
Order, let's get back to work. Okay, our next agenda item is a Westchester III, third, final PDD. We're considering a final PDD for the parcel which is located south of Warren and rest, west of Ridge. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes, we're considering 2A and 2B together, I guess it'd be easier to do that.
Okay.
We've got the preliminary site plan for Ridge Creek Site Condominiums, which is the companion to the Westchester III final PDD. So the property is approximately 22 acres. It's zoned R1. They, we're in earlier this year for preliminary PDD. So this is basically the final development agreement for, you know, for the 22 acres. About 40%, 47% of the land will be retained and common open space. The housing proposed will be similar to the homes being built in Westchester, probably upgraded, you know, due to the, the site. The minimum lot size is 13,500 square feet, with lots ranging from 85 to 110 feet in width. The required definite benefits to the community include paving, an extended portion of Ridge Road north of the Park West apartment site to the entrance drive to Patriot Park. They're doing that as part of the apartments. So they basically are paving more of Ridge Road than what the apartments required. Preservation of natural features and open space, creation of additional value for units that will back or side to the wooded ravined areas, updated architectural standards that exceed ordinance minimums, and provisions of amenities including decorative mailboxes and street signs and those type of, of streetscape elements. The, essentially, the final PDD plan is similar to the preliminary PDD plan. They're still in the process of determining what they're doing with tree removal on the site. So we'll see that pretty much at final site plan. But with the preliminary site plan, you know, they haven't figured out all of the tree replacement yet, you know, until they finished all of their final engineering. They have kind of a detailed landscape plan along Ridge Road. They have some low-level lights on their masonry, you know, monuments, which are scaled down from the Westchester project, and they have a, a streetlight in the middle Boulevard Island. Other than that, the plan is, you know, they've kind of worked out some of the grading around the pond and around the ravine edge that we asked them to look at. But other than that, the, the plans are similar to what you've seen previously. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Graywall, and he can answer any questions you have about the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, at least part of this does require a public hearing. So shall we open that up?
So I'll move to open the public hearing.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zuber to open the public hearing, and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Yes, sir. Did you have anything to add to Mr.? Pardon?
I'm the petitioner, so I'm-
Right. Did you have anything to add to what has been said so far?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Is there anything from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
After two hours. Hi, I'm Dick Dyon, 50360 Warren Road. Well, could we, well, I guess this one will do. I spoke to you on March 6th when you last looked at this plan, and at that time, I expressed my concerns about the lighting that might be installed in the public areas, in the entrance and within. I have taken a look at the site plan that I think was dated May, I'm not sure what the date was. Do we have a lighting? Oops. Well, what I was looking for was the lighting plan there is. Okay, here, here, here we are, I think.
Sergeant at Duck.
It doesn't matter. I apologize for taking so much time. Because what I wanted to say is that I am satisfied, based on what I was able to see in the plan, that this is minimally disruptive, and I think very respectful to the neighbors that face the property. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
And I'm very pleased to see that, that modification is in there, or at least that modification between Westchester and, what is it, Ridge? Ridge Creek. Thank you.
On Ridge Creek.
Thank you.
That was refreshing to hear a comment like that for-
And sorry.
You stayed here for two hours, did you ever that? Thank you.
It's refreshing also that my concern was addressed. And I do appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else? No?
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, I have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zuber, and support by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. We're going to start down on this end with Commissioner Oken this time.
No comments.
Commissioner Perkins?
No comments. Thank you, though, for yours.
Commissioner Zuber?
I echo, I echo Julia's comments.
Most people do.
Most people do. Not yours.
You're not echoing-
No, Alan, forget it.
Commissioner Engel? Commissioner Graham Hudek?
No, read through everything, thank you.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to spoil this, this train that's going on here. I have no concerns. I, I think it's a, it's a fine project. It looks like it's going to be a great addition to that area, and I think that's a great area anyway. So I mean, you know, thank you for, for doing that for Canton. Appreciate that. With that said-
Can I make a motion, sir?
You sure can.
All right. I move to recommend approval of the request to approve the final planned development for Westchester III and preliminary site plan for Ridge Creek Site Condominium on tax parcel 025990004701 as proposed.
Support.
Okay, we've got a, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber, and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any further discussion on this motion? And would you call the vote, Commissioner Zuber?
Certainly. Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes, our recommendation goes forward. All right, we have some stuff to give to staff. The Hamlet Point Phase 2, the Landings, the Wellington on the Willow. Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
No. Oh. Move. Go, go.
A bunch of rebels after all this time.
Support, support. We're a little punchy now.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear support?
Support, yes.
All right, we got a motion, support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have to set a public hearing for November 20th. Three items, I won't even go through them. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
Wait, I have a question.
You have a question?
November 20th? We're not meeting in October, or we're skipping?
Well, I wanted to, because we have the master plan amendments out on the street for comment under the 65-day period, I know that we have things coming in for November, so I just wanted to go ahead and set this date, so we have a hard date for the public hearing for these.
Okay.
Now, the first item on here, just let me explain, that the 2017 Conference of Plan Amendments were what you authorized me to move forward with. We had two add-ons after we had the, the meeting. One is an industrial piece of property in the south end of the township, and the other piece is the Oakwood Beaumont piece on Beck Road north of Michigan Avenue that's currently designated light industrial. So they would like those considered in conjunction with our amendments. Since you didn't have an opportunity to see those, I had to treat them as separate amendments, even though we'll look at them all together.
Oh, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so I move to set the public hearing.
Support.
Number 20.
Okay. You two are the only ones that have the amendment.
No, no, Commissioner-
Commissioner Hudek just made a motion.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, all right. All right. All in favor-
Everyone else is-
All in favor of setting the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any, any further discussion?
Right now, we don't have any business for October. We may have at least no public hearings, so we may have a miscellaneous site plan or two. But right now, we have nothing that I have ready to, to set or refer for October.
What about the stuff we just sent to you?
That'll probably be November, so.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the staff referral stuff.
That'll probably be November, so.
Oh, yeah, November's going to be a big move.
Well, November, we have a 20, a meeting on the 20th and our regular meeting.
If there's something- November 4th will be your regular meeting.
November 4th is a regular meeting.
So the Landing Site Plan may be on for October. Hamlet Point Phase 2, that's just developers to get a revision, you won't see that. Wellington on the Willow, that's the BW East, conditional rezoning, that's the piece on lots. They're making their preliminary PDD application pursuant to the conditional rezoning, so that, I'm not sure will be ready for October. It may be, not sure, so.
Jeff, what's going on between Rite Aid and Bel-Tire?
Can we, can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can make any motion that you want.
Okay.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait.
I was just suggesting-
That's the parking, the takeover.
Is this like, muni on the commission?
That's just the staging for the, that's just the staging, Greg, for the parking lot at Bel-Tire.
Oh, okay, so they're, oh-
They're just staging the dirt over there.
Oh, I see, okay, because of that expansion. Okay, and then what's happening, what's happening behind National Coney Island?